Okay.
Welcome to the City of Alpine, City of Zoney. Page 5A, 30 in on the dot. That is verified given that the plan is set in. She has the city of Alpine, so we'll need to find her. Do I need to repeat?
Yeah.
Um, I would like to call this meeting to order. Do we have any other comments?
Yes, we have Kiersten. She's a gentleman. If I want to just make the comment, which would be allowed if you.
I heard that.
So, once we get into the item, we can call on her. So she's not responding.
Okay.
She is, she is here.
Okay, okay. First, we have our public hearings. You would like to read our first public hearing.
Sure. First public hearing is a public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding replant 2023-07-01. Replant to allow the applicant non-wagner care of AMX S Land Development LLC to combine underlying lots of one to allow for development. The property in question is located on Holland Avenue and 15th Street. Legally described as the east part of block one, two and three and block six. Thomas Terny Higgins Edition, the town of Alpine, Prifter County, Texas. Partial ID of the subject property is par one, two, eight, seven, six. The record property owner is Prince George. Current zoning classification of the subject property is C2 business district. If the reply is approved, the zoning classification will remain C2 business district. That was the top line is on the other side of the room from getting involved. If the discussion is reserved for the action. Do we have anybody here to comment on the public hearing?
So do we need to move on?
Yep, we can move on to public hearing number two. Public hearing number two. Uh, during the discussion, the action item, I just wanted to discuss. Public hearing number two has approved special use permit 2023-07-01. A special use permit to allow the applicant Alpine and the municipal district to establish a day here. Property in question is located in 704 West Sal Ross Avenue. Legally described as block six through 10, block one, Gales addition to the city of Alpine. Partial ID of the subject property is par one, zero, four, five, zero. The record property owner is Alpine High SD Trust. The current zoning classification of the subject property is R2 Family District. If the reply is approved, the zoning classification will remain R2, two family. Do we have anybody here to comment on that item? No vote.
Do we have a motion for the, do we need to have a motion to approve? And it's previous board meeting. Do we have a motion? To approve, and you all had a chance to look over. All in favor? So the minutes for March 27th, 2023 have been approved. We can move on to the discussion. Uh, first discussion item, do you ever see what you think now?
Yes, discussion item 5A, discussion between commissioners and city staff regarding procedural items, questions and or recent planning and zoning related items. This item is just to facilitate conversation in case the commissioners have any questions for city staff or city staff has been.
Do we have any questions or announcements? Moving on to item B. We will continue the discussion regarding creation of historic district. Um, in May, we had a workshop that I think most everybody attended. Where we were involved. We evaluated the downtown block. We are considering a historic district ordinance. We had experts around. We also hold the majority of the property owners in, on the, in the downtown area, the 6th Street, uh, Holland Avenue. Everyone, there's nobody so far that's against it. Everybody is, is, uh, they, they are delighted, they want to know what's going on there. So I would like to propose that maybe we have one part workshop where we invite the community member Q and A. Because this was the, um, the walking tour, as you know, we, it was just a tour and then a little, you know, conversation happening where we didn't necessarily see. What were your thoughts?
I, I think some of the, you know, right there. They create a tour of the, of the blocks. I, uh, hey, we've been, I spent more people from these long visits. There with the, there. Don't know if we can, my friends, this is, we designated this particular district. Can we do a tour and continue to expand on? Start with these two all.
Well, I think we could, we could do a tour and expand. But I have a question. The G O, and some of our great teams, I don't exactly, that's when, when the city council approved a historic district overlay in 2011. And, and this is my question. So at, at, at our ordinances, after you have like the, the ordinances online, then there's an addendum for, um, uh, I think it's a section zoning map and minutes for their special variances. Do we, does anything in that, in the addendum? Does that? Those would be included in the ordinance, is that correct?
I'm not too sure I follow the question.
Okay, so if you may want to pull it up online. So if you, if you pull up our city, our ordinances and you scroll below, there's an addendum.
Correct.
The amendments. Yeah, so you have exactly. The, um, sorry, say that again.
Amendments.
Well, there's, there's a section, what is it called? Probably I don't have my file on my, on my computer. But there is a section, it's called zoning map and specific variances. At the bottom, go all the way down to the very bottom.
Yeah, that one is important in whole ordinance. So.
So do we not follow us?
So not all of the zoning ordinances are approved. So essentially, this one, article two in the zoning map of amendments, specific variances. It goes, it does go and list, uh, quite a few different sections over there.
So do we not, do we not include this? One of those was a historic district overlay. It's already been approved. It's, um, 2011.01.01. And the reason why I'm asking is that's in there and we should be following it. Should we just amend that? And what area did that actually include? Because my, right. Because it was approved by council, it did list overlays. It also said that, uh, planning and zoning would approve any, you know, listed overlay meeting guidelines and bill that go that'll building. You know, any plans needed to be approved and, um.
Uh, the city.
It was a pass. So we thought it was, for some reason, there was. Those passes made it to the ordinance. And I did look at it.
Um, I think if you could, if you did the exact section, I'm not saying any, you know, about a historic district. I mean, I, I did share the ordinance with the commission as far as what the city council did implement. 1001. Uh, there was a historic district overlay implemented by ordinance.
It's sure listed on that, so that is, I, I can put on the title side. Let's look at it, it would be a lot easier to amend that.
That would. Yeah, I would have to do some research in the section. To be honest, I haven't really looked at this section of our building ordinances. Um, so I think we could have it as a discussion item at the next meeting and kind of follow up on. Copy that.
So what I did is I just copied and pasted the 2011.01.01 in search bar. Then immediately pulled up there.
What was it? Thanks, please.
So you and I vote, historic districts are lots of categories classifications. Are you going for historic district that qualify state federal?
It's a locally governed. Um, now there's, there's property owners in this historic district that are interested. And it'd be, it'd be on the national registry. And we, you know, they can go through historic Alpine and all of that process. This is that locally governed historic district with building guidelines. Where the property owners, they were going to make any significant changes to the exterior of the building. They would submit those, this for sort of opposing. And we would for them having reasonable guidelines. And, uh, and we would vote, yeah, yay or no. We are following historic work for historic district ordinance from Redditch Farm and Bernie that follows. And, um, and I spoke with, in fact, I spent three years of reading on the last year, or 2020. A successful historic districts. And I've even spoken to the, um, the THC, uh, Texas Historic Mission. And they, they agree that a, an ordinance, a city ordinance with, um, overlay is an ultimate term that truly has. They can.
Right, and finally, the point of the question was, you're going to be including property. And I think this was done much before, which may have been in 2011. When the property owners all of a sudden discovered when they accepted spots from the state or federal government, they relinquished control on the interior of the building. And I don't, I'd like to not repeat that.
Yeah, this is not that.
Okay.
This is not that. This would be like, for instance, right now, the Hollis Hotel. They are seeking that nomination from the national registry. They're going through a couple of their student preservation. They are fully aware, you know, what all the, you know, the owner of others. Because he is going to take advantage of tax credits and grants. And they're going to do a big restoration.
Of state.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, if any, you know, we're always, you know, anyone wants to question on that, but this is not. This is not a, that type of. If our group is going to suppress and make something that's creative, that treats people for our communities. That helps, helps the whole property value, but doesn't keep them from making repairs. To keep them from, from, um, from maintaining their, their places. Um, so anyway, did you?
I've been looking and I'm not able to find the exact one you're talking about. It says there's quite a few.
Okay.
But thinking, oh, you know what?
It says.
So ordinance, uh, ordinance, many of the zoning ordinance, article zoning map, this article related. So that, that ordinance is the one that I previously shared with you all, like, you know, 2011 dash zero one dash zero one. Um, and that's the one that I was referring to, wasn't. And so I had sent that to y'all. Of course, you could, uh, you know, decide if you want to go ahead. You said it's based for amendments or just repeal it.
Basically, we need to repeal it.
Well, one of the two. You have to take what's existing in existence and then add to it or repeal it. Of course, city council could be the ones to have.
Right. I guess that's, that's still the case. Those are the ones that prove that it never paid.
Well, it is, it is in our.
It is in our.
It just really, I don't think there was never much traction as far as developing. Initial, I mean, to my knowledge, other than the initial implementation of the ordinance, I don't think.
Yeah, I think it's a destiny that the planning and zoning study or the administration, there's a specific overlay and some guideline.
I mean, and they talked about it for years, that previous planning, the commission and, and just meetings. Um, they did discuss historic district, did you discuss, if you look back on, you did this, that, discuss. Um, but again, to my knowledge, other than passing that ordinance, I don't think there was traction of it.
It's been a long, you know, it's attached to the, it's just. Something that they put out. So, uh, so that, so there's, are we talking about the time to call for the, uh, yes, it would have a district in the company, so. That's what, that's.
See, and if you, if the commission would prefer, if this is a passport, it hasn't been repealed, it's still in effect. Uh, if you, if you as a collective body think, oh, let's go with this, what we have, that's an option. Maybe all of them ended. Yeah, yeah.
Right, and also exactly what area that. I think that what a. Yeah.
The one that I sent out, that I will send out again, um, does include like that. I believe so.
Um. So any other thoughts on historic district? What I, if we did a workshop that we invited. You know, I would like to maybe ask, like, speak about it, about how it supports and, uh, benefit our. If we can even see that. So somebody, you have an idea of how many roughly you have the crew for the first workshop? Yeah, well, a lot of the owners of these properties don't. Um, but we did have, I mean, we had. Oh, this, Sarah simply wasn't there, she's a property owner. She called and said that she, she supported it. Linda Bo also called and said that she supported it along with. Uh, for, uh, we know that, uh, I have, so we had some verbal, people call us. And then we had a few, uh, additions. Yeah, Bill Ivey was there. It wasn't. Yeah, well, if he's not, he, that's. Just like, we need to, you know, there's a lot of people that are, maybe not all of them.
That's my standard of workshop. I mean, my opinion, it might be better not excellent.
I agree, yeah.
This is a line, this is sometimes a plan to explore it, if you'd like. That would also give you all some time to review the ordinance, the fact that, you know, ideas or amendments you want to make.
And, uh, oh, and additionally, Matt sold it. Would you like to talk about selling your brother?
Would you?
Oh. So Matt's brother explained his decision of what he does.
Yeah, he's a historic restoration architect. He's an architect right now.
You can make your recommendation. One of the things that we, we need to make sure that's done, on the, uh, the proposed historic and guide, we're proposing. The last time it was too large, we're proposing the area around, uh, in front of the Hollis Hotel. It goes down 6th Street, in front of the courthouse. And then that, so it's a little, this is square. And in that square, we already have, will have, the Hollis Hotel to supply to the other national registries. We do have to, and then the courthouse, which is all the national registries. And, uh, so we thought we would do a historic first small. And.
Or small, or small.
Start small and, uh, and so one of the things we need to is identify the, the building types. And, right, the architecture stuff. And, um, I, I thought I pocketed, I did pocket this, I said, what I did with it. On the recommendation for your brother, from your brother, on style of architecture, which is post, uh, row, it's row road.
Yeah, it's called row, you know.
Right. I don't know if you guys would have to go out and visit or anything like that and decide to name a potential firm. But if I can throw out a name, John and Candace Foltz. You probably know that they are called the most famous restoration architects in the state of Texas. Like, uh, several dozen, what else? Little towns like this.
Okay, I'm sorry. Of this restoration that's working on the nomination. And they, they have a red, they don't have so, and then it's possible. And they are currently good survey. So I reached out to them, uh, since it's, if they encompass insights, they're already.
And there's a restoration. And what I would like y'all to be aware of is, a true restoration will cost two to four times as much as a repair or a model. Because restoration means putting it back the way it was. That's a whole different ballgame. So just be aware of that when you're going around words.
Right, yeah, there's restoration, preservation, you know, our main goal is, I, I think collectively is to, we don't want to lose these buildings because they're not to repair up. And we don't want someone, and it's not if, it's when, somebody's going to come in and buy, buy one of our historical buildings in Alpine. So I'm, I'm not paying $5 million, so we're just going to raise it and put a, you know, dollar store in all of the day. That's our, I think, what, you know, we want to protect this little, you know, our charm, our charm. We want, we also have a lot of people that have invested a lot of money in these downtown buildings. They, they care for them. We want to protect their investment. Right, I think that that's kind of what, you know, to preserve our history. Um, that, you know, creating a, a overlay that's reasonable. That mostly, that really goes up, protects the, you know, the last thing we want to do is tear down a building. If we tear it down and it's in a downtown area, we want it to look like it belongs there.
You're trying to kind of replace it, sure.
Right, right. You know, that, at least, you know, and, and encourage, you know, if they need minor repairs, paint, you know, they want to replace it, it is, or we don't want to prevent that. Because that's when things stop happening and, you know, the media, you know, being on a state registry doesn't help because then they're intimidated. They don't want to go and get permission, you know, and then it just never gets repaired.
And this doesn't mean they can't do improvements, changes, so you're prepared. All that kind of stuff, yeah, do all that.
Well, and they can do whatever they want to be into it.
Right.
So, again, we, I understand budgets and all that other stuff, but you're walking a very thin line because Texas is property rights state. And there was just a big ruling on Airbnb's and so forth, where city ordinances, city governments, governments cannot dictate for property owner, how they may or may not use their property. They can provide rules and regulations, but cannot dictate property use. So, again, as your writings or your existing things, I would suggest, working with the city, that you get the advice of council. And don't end them before the state Supreme Court or the federal Supreme Court.
Yeah, they usually go against cities.
Yeah, they usually, again, Texas is a unique, a lot of people don't understand, Texas is one of the few states in the Union that allows us to own our minerals.
So do we have any more comments or questions?
I'd like to, I'd like to do, get in the map and then we'll discuss that again.
Okay, okay, we'll get the map and then your, the, the original ordinance and let's add to. And then Wendy, um, I'm just, names off my mind. The gentleman from, from Bernie, who, yeah, so Paul, wherever. Do you think he would maybe be willing to, to talk on Zoom and explain that, that, to, we had a workshop. The, the, um, you know, the benefits of, how our city can, can benefit from a locally governed historic. Ordinance?
Sure.
Now, you know, and maybe ensure people understand the difference between locally and state. So they don't get too confused, because then that's when you start getting the pushback. And I'm all for the local, because they're like, city, you have control over what's going on, you have to have a down down state of. Right, right. So, but how do people know the difference?
And so I either, I was just talking about. You reminded me that that was a little bit before his time and I didn't get in contact with Chris Turck, who was really the, kind of, about her things.
Yeah, just, yeah, and maybe if we talk to some, get a couple of people that have had some success with it. You know, if anybody knows.
Strickford locally?
Yeah, thirty percent of the money from there. Wendy, yeah, and Wendy has some, and Bernie has one too. And that's, maybe he has success with it. Wendy has, uh, some things from Bernie and, yeah.
I can sure ask, so who would this presentation be changed to? Us or?
I think we do maybe a workshop. A workshop that where they, you know, and we can do it. The G O, if we have speakers, oh, no, there's, there's monitored there. Okay, never mind, good haunted space in the audience. If we had a Zoom, you know, speaker, and if they want to come in. That would be, that's, they'd probably love to come, but.
I could, I could maybe.
His time, maybe. We are sponsored by the community. And we talked to, you know, the board of the sort of Alpine and see if they'd be able to. Okay.
People under, I want it out there, so.
I mean, that's what.
Yeah, well, if we wait two months for the August, that will be off the, it's still going to be hot. Texas is everywhere.
Right.
I was going to ask if like, so if we could make the presentation available for, like, guests on Zoom. So we talked about some of the, the designers that got rid here, could they get them on the Zoom and ask questions that way?
Yeah.
And, and what, and, uh, just, correct me if I'm wrong, so with a locally governed historic district. So if you're doing a, a historic district through the national registry, you have to have 100%, everybody's all in. Historic district, so if you're doing a, a historic district through the National Registry, you have to have 100%, everybody's all in. But with a, with a ordinance, as long as you notify everyone. I mean, it's not like they, they all individually have to vote gay or nay, I mean, I think that this small room. A person no, and I'm pretty sure they will all vote yay, but I think you just send, if, if we create an overlay for somebody's property.
I've never read that, uh, they're considered disrejoiced.
Okay, so shall we move on, or do y'all have any other thoughts or? Okay, um, let me see if there's anything else in my notes that was important, I think that that was it, it was just re-identifying that ordinance that's already.
I think that covered the A B vote.
Yeah, and then I really wish I had that language exactly from your brother. That was.
I can get it again.
Okay, I have it somewhere in my, it's probably right in front. And now, uh, let's move on to item number C. Discuss signs that are in district fair in town and discuss the possible options to mitigate these unrightly signs, including updating the ordinance. Kirsten, do you have any comments?
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
You did say, you did say Kirsten, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I just wanted to, uh, be here today to kind of lend my support on this. Item, um, we, so I'm Kirsten Moody, I'm Ward Five, and I am, I'm part of a group called Alpine Community Projects. And one of the things that we are trying to focus on is, um, beautification in areas in, in town. And economic development, and so we feel, or I shouldn't say we, I feel like this is a, this. Is a thing that is sort of a low hanging fruit area that maybe. We could figure out a way to tackle, because as you're driving into town and around town. I think sometimes we don't even notice some of this stuff, if we're used to it, but when we come back in, for, you know, if you're a visitor coming in. I feel like it's kind of stark, some of these just old poles that there's nothing on, or it's, it's ragged, and it just doesn't look great. And I don't know what the ways are that we can, um, you know, as a city, sort of help that process along to make it easier for people that. You know, just having not taken them down because, uh, haven't taken them down because it's a trouble or whatever, maybe there's something that. We can all do to figure out how to get them down, I don't know, but anyway, I just wanted to lend my support to this item.
Thank you. So. It's, but sometimes when we're here, you know, but all the time when we're here, we did stop seeing things. And I think it's important, she gets so used to something, you never pay any attention, and. Kirsten brought these signs to my attention. And then I drove through Alpine with the perspective, I tried to have a perspective of a, of a visitor. Or somebody that is building, uh, you know, maybe bringing a business here. Um. You know, somebody that may move their family here, and when you drive through that, act like I've never, you know, driven through this street or driven on the street before, and really. I stopped looking at the yellow, flashing sign. I didn't know how to work the, 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 the way I stopped like. But it really, uh, it, it kind of goes back to one of our, um. One of. Our assignments, which is control the growth of stores deemed. Detrimental to small economies, but why would somebody, you know, what would they see, if you drive into this town and you see. Signs with stuff falling off, it's been there for years and boarded up. Boarded that storefront. Yeah, beautification, yeah, I mean, what, what do you think about, I mean, would you move? Would you think, okay, this would be a great place for another dollar store? Or would you, like, I would like to build a fragment of this here, you know, what, what? What would you think?
Well, I mean, not necessarily just visiting, so I want to move my face here, or should go to four here, or, you know, or I want to keep visiting this place.
Right.
Uh, I want to stay in Alpine rather than going out to Big Ben right away.
Right, it's kind of, like the cliche, like you dress for the job you want, but, you know, that's kind of what it reminded me of, so.
So probably do look back, we were just, we were a contractor supplier, or like there's something that they, you know, my husband, we care about. Signs, like these signs are terrible, don't y'all do something about that in your commission?
So, yeah, there is, yeah, I look really happy to see that on there, because they really do have that. There is an ordinance, and I think that, I was gonna, and we have, um, so Drew, do we send out? When I sent the email like a month or two ago to say, do you see these signs? Or Jessica? Great big chair. You know, do we send out letters, like what is, they, can we, are you able to pull up the sign ordinance? Do you have a read it? We have a sign ordinance. What is, what does the sign ordinance say, and then a few of the people I've talked to said, well, they're damaged because of wind, and it's so expensive to repair. Well, if it's damaged, because we have that much damage because of wind, maybe we modify the ordinance to lower the sign. Love it, I think Love it does that, they have a, they are assigned, they're consistently, yeah, consistently getting damaged, or because of wind. Maybe we, you know, but have it back in the fine.
So while you're looking, while you're looking, can I expand on what, or can that?
Yeah.
I agree entirely, beautification needs to be the foundation of what we're trying to do. And a lot of you are not old enough to remember this, but when Giuliani was mayor of New York City, he instituted the broken windows policy. And actually turned around some of the slums and ghettos, because people don't take pride. In something that looks like a slum or a ghetto, but if you start cleaning it up and, and just break, you know, repairing broken windows. But the attitude changes. And part of what we've got that we're dealing with now is the attitude. It's some are non-resident owners, so they have no clue. And then others, it's just the apathy of the community. And we really need to clean this up. And we really need to do it legally.
What I'm thinking of is, a lot of these signs are. Steel. Irons. Can we find the one that would take them down for the material? And. There's a lot of money in that.
There's money in it, but not that much money. It's, it's like tearing down an old building, you can get a lot of historic stuff, banisters, stairs. Nice hardwood flooring and everything, but cost labor and availability of labor. Those people, it's cheaper to tear it down.
And that's where we're using on the building side of it. Just, we think we have to do the business, go out of business, but you still have the property. Sign comes down with the boost and all, for us, as a building code standpoint, there's not really much we can do, because it's not, might not save you to more of them. If you will, that's.
Have you been expecting them, have you actually looked at them, you know, a lot of these steel poles start to rust out at the bottom. And, and then, and we've had three light poles fall over on the street I live on, because they rusted out at the bottom.
The Highland sign, when the lintless debris falls off of it, it's, it's flashing down. Yeah, that several times, I've seen that happen.
So I have section seventy-eight dash three up, it's a general regulation. Uh, prohibited signs in all zones, the following prohibited signs shall be removed or brought into place. It proceeds to list eleven different items, and the item, well, more than eleven, actually thirteen. Item twelve is any sign that has been obvious for repair, as determined by the code enforcement officer or agency representative. Which decision may be appealed to the planning and zoning portion. So I'd say, you know. A lot of these signs are, are an obvious, uh, for repair. Kind of thing. Essentially, code enforcement would just follow the process to cite them, and I believe that they actually have on a lot of.
Yeah, so, all of the questions, uh, I think I kind of, the children, but. Uh, the original email that was sent over with the complaint, I mean, technically it wasn't a formal complaint, but it was a. The pictures that are in your packet versus the word code enforcement, and. Adeline and I have been working on identifying all of the property owners, contacting them, only ones that are, and even ones that aren't even on that, we actually drove through city and. And tried to identify ones that weren't even in your packet, and you've actually resolved a couple of them already. Um, the ones, the Highland one, they sold with the owner and the manager, um, you know, everything costs money, so. Uh, we can't force them to do anything, but give them some time to work on it. And so that's, the only thing I can do right now is if I get contacted the property owner, that's where I'm going to start, um, before it comes to this.
Now, if you can't force them to spend money, how come I get these nasty letters from lawyers out of Lubbock to say if I don't cut my weeds, the city's going video with it and started it.
I can't force them to put a new sign in, but they can repair it or take it down.
Okay.
I can't make them put new advertising.
No, no, you can't make them repair it, but then they could make them remediate.
Yes.
Because it's an obvious poor condition, you can cite them, okay.
But we, any going forward. We can. We start with. Dark sky, dark sky. Not well, and make the signs lower.
And, yeah, we have to, we want to, maybe go through Alpine and not see that, only see the amount if you want to.
And I'm on the night sky committee, so the height of the sign has really little to do with whether it is or is not dark sky compliant. The type of light, the frequency of the light, and the direction the light is pointing is the issues, or are the issues. Oh, you absolutely, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, but height, I don't know that you could.
But it is, they, the dark sky, well, there are cities, you go through parts of Austin, I mean, um, Liberty Hill, and. They don't have any tall ones, everything that comes in was like, like, street level, so there's no reason why we can't go there too. Going forwards, and of course, it's within the historic district, and that's work on getting rid of all the other. Um, what is the maximum height our signs are allowed?
My, my recollection is thirty-five B, that's pretty much the.
Can we make a recommendation to lower that to?
I made a question for Drew.
Drew, we want to make a recommendation, if we can, we'll get lower the, um. To maybe the street level, or is it like? Fourteen, but it's right on the ground.
Communities I've driven through, they're on the ground.
Yeah.
They're part of landscaping now.
It'd be more than like, say, six feet tall or whatever you decide.
Right.
Well, if they're already installed, and that makes.
Let's say, once they're. And, and they're, they're not working anymore, fixes, or if we have to.
They have it moved later and they've got.
Right. Like El Paso, you know, that's, that's, I feel, nothing over one story, no sign of, of.
That would be.
Well, city council would have, yeah, but I didn't know if there, if there was anything, you know, hidden in part of the building codes or typical norms or standards.
No, there's, and with this being out here, there's one thing weird or not.
Yeah, we can do it, because they're going through changing all the street lines, and all the other stuff, I mean, that, this would be the prime time.
Well, I would say, you know, if y'all are interested, you could take, uh, a copy of this ordinance and mark it up as far as exactly what changes you want. You could actually download it and work from on the website. And if y'all are interested in doing that, you could propose, uh, that the commission makes a recommendation, city council to change the order. It would come to the commission, uh, once the commission did vote to make a recommendation, it would go to city council, and they would ultimately be the ones to decide whether or not.
And you can actually make them take down the tall signs. By ordinance, but you have to give them a grandfather clause for the sunset, the vision, so you can pass the ordinance and make them bring down the big signs, which typically by emotion.
Well, it's not trying to make the, the existing. Uh, businesses have to comply with it as long as their sign was not. You know, like McDonald's, for example, wouldn't want to change that right now, but if something, maybe they remodel it, so then it. Did they need to get in?
Do you make any alterations or if this relocates?
Remodel or?
Yeah, we tend to need, they wouldn't go back to the old.
So, the next meeting, can we, do we have a volunteer, somebody to maybe take red line, the current ordinance?
I could.
No, I think that's, and then, and with red line, so if we take the current ordinance with red line and present it next commission meeting, then. Then it can go to council.
Yeah, I would say that if you want to give, give me, uh, maybe tomorrow, or I can give you a call, or whenever you have time, we can go over the options. Because we do have some ordinance procedures that we have implemented as well, uh, that I want to see how it would impact the whole process. But I would say we can definitely get something started for next week.
What about the board?
Thanks, industry book. Right?
Right, it's right on hold, still retail record.
No, no, the retail's still open.
The night is already, oh, oh.
It's our store, and someone mentioned that there was an issue of five family views.
If it's our store, move over to.
No, not that, this was, this was, this store has been boarded up for at least five years.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it is. Uh, okay, let's just give them a little bit of grace, and they figured this out. So, I know this is not a planning and zoning, I mean, item is not part of a building. And then you represent the, the building, uh.
I would say, yeah, guys jumped in here, but in many cases, condemned building, if there's still structural sound, boarding them up is an acceptable.
Was building.
It's quick, complex, bones loose.
Yeah.
Building.
No, 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 I'm saying, uh, if we take action against the property owner and the. Building itself structurally is not a hazard, boarding it up is a solution that's acceptable.
And this is why overlays are ordinance, if we had an overlay or ordinance in place, then that couldn't happen.
So we need to order up things to make it look more attractive.
Right.
But I am mural on.
Could we reach out to them maybe, and can we find a? Yeah, and maybe, yeah, and figure out, maybe we find a, you know.
For the.
It's very, I had a great piece of property.
In the Rooster County, yeah, I ever see it on the inside.
But, um, I looked one time, it seemed like we got in New York, and then maybe it has, or there was a sunny land in a New York. Address, and I can't remember. What, but I did look at it at one point thinking that, I mean, this was, you know, four years ago, at least, I think, or maybe I could do something with that building.
This is something else that you might want to think about, that I've only recently become aware of. Midland Mendessa, since nineteen fifty, has been for, I think, five boom bus cycles. And. One bus cycle back. When oil pulled out of town. Property got cheap. And Midland ended up with a bunch of New York, California, and other foreigner. Owners of all of the real estate in the downtown area. And they really don't get fingered down about the city, they care about making money. So now we've got all these properties in Midland that we can't make the property owners fudge, because they don't live there and they don't care. So my, the moral of the story is, we need to be careful, we keep talking about all these out of town property owners. Well, that's a big problem that Midland is facing by now.
Well, that's the problem with the Alpine spacing, with the Airbnb's that were purchased en masse. Uh, by out of town, out of state owners, out of country owners. They say people love, you know.
That will lead to a whole other little discussion, and then. There's issues with that as well, with insurable issues.
Right.
Being cost prohibitive for people to maintain an Airbnb. Another issue.
That's a, that's a round table after we're concluding this. That's a, that's a round table after we're concluding this discussion. Um, okay. So, shall we move on to, um, discussions, right? Yeah. Uh, discussion updates on commissioner assignment of the task city council objectives. Number one, ordinance review. Do we have a report on the ordinance review?
So a little bit of these on the ordinance review, so I went for you to order. And are we supposed to be reviewing all of them or just the planning and zoning?
Just the planning. Anything of it is impacted, you know, by, I didn't say.
So right now, we are, so let's, you know, I think right now we're reviewing the sign. My homework was I reviewed the sign ordinance and, um, that historical, uh, addendum. I keep calling it addendum, that's what we call it in architecture and design, and there's an addendum.
Overlay?
Yeah, well, no, it's the add-on.
Oh.
Not the appendix. It's the little bottom section. Um.
Correct.
And we can continue to do that. I mean, we'll just, Randy and I will get together this week. Okay, okay. Um, and then Matt Walter did an excellent quiz that, no, we didn't update that, we're not updated about any map.
Only map though.
No, it's the. Thank you for the ordinance review. The ordinance review, and he did the, uh.
I did the ordinance review for all thirteen years. We already have the list now of all the zoning changes in the last thirteen years that have been approved by the city.
So that may, that's checked off then, yeah. That's what we wanted you to do.
Updating the zoning map, task two is pretty much completed by fire.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Task number two is what was completed?
Yes, updating the zoning map.
Well, that, that's only half of it though.
It is only not, but we're, we're at a, uh, at the point where city administration needs to figure out how we're gonna move forward and what.
You see where we have already approved five thousand dollars for that? And I don't think it's been spent.
Right, right.
So, the next step is to hire somebody that's GIS.
And, you know, it was, uh, I believe allocated to five thousand in twenty twenty, so it would have been rebudgeted. It's not.
Okay.
First start is still there, but we're in the budgeting process right now. It was perfect time to recap.
Okay.
Okay, and also we have name members to the commission. We want to put them on one of these tasks. Chairwoman? Oh, yes, we had, uh. So for our minutes review, we had Amit, you, Wendy, and also Eva. Eva's on there with you guys. Okay. So we, you have one spot, and there's Amit that needs to be filled. Okay, well, we have a lot of tasks, so should we, um, see what else we have and then evaluate that? Okay, so that's the ordinance review, and then what about Matt, sure, the ordinance review?
Right.
Okay, and then there's updating the zoning map. Who is, who is assigned to that? That was Matt, Eva, Ward five representative, and Eileen.
That, that's, I'm done, now it's in the city. As far, as far as, uh, actually redoing the management.
So number two's crossed off. So the comprehensive zoning map is on hold. And then, the historic district is in Hurricane, right, right. Um, what about the control road that stores? Who, who is on that? That was Eileen, Amit, Matt, Abby, and Ward five representative.
I agree.
So, I mean, I'm. And we add, we have the volunteers. Right, thank you. And, I guess this is a continuing discussion, you know, that we're gonna have a lot of, um. On who's doing what. Right, okay. I mean, if anyone, if it, if anyone is passionate about any of these, if any of our board, um, or commission members are, would like to help with any of these five, let us know, otherwise you'll be assigned. Or buy on them, okay, do you have that?
Hello, historic district and control growth authority?
Yeah, yes.
Of that by.
This got the curiosity, this is kind of a very broad general of stores. Are you targeting, are you targeting any stores that have dollar in their name?
Well, well, what I, this should be, you said, it shouldn't be right with enough, that's gonna be, uh, control growth of businesses being detrimental. It could sometimes be a game rare.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
Right, but, you know, just other businesses that could be detrimental.
Now we have three, I think.
Yeah, there may be, maybe four.
Yeah, Vegas has six massage parlors now.
Yeah, I know, they're, I guarantee that, you know, we give them the, the green line, okay, the red line, we give them the green line. They will.
But you're, you got the grid.
Right. They will start with an N. You know, it's, uh, and that's what I'm gonna do, that's one is really probably gonna give this historic district government. We really wanna, you know, begin to develop strong ordinances that people they need to be, in a perfect world, you know, business members or business owners, building owners, owners, to be good stewards and take care of the community and those things that, that.
In a perfect world, that's true, but in the mo, in the real world, there are people that are not financially able. I'm thinking of people that are my age who are living on a fixed budget.
Well, I have businesses.
Right.
Yeah, to say a whole.
Differences, yes.
So that one is definitely a tall task, um, but, you know, it was really added, I believe, just to facilitate the discussion, and, you know, if somebody's willing to go in there and figure out a way how to do it legally, which it might be even harder now because I don't know if y'all heard about the Death Star bill that we passed. Uh, but it's basically limiting a lot of cities' power to regulate things like that in different, it's many different areas and kind of, um, basically using state law as a base, of course, state law always is, but in this instance, in a lot of areas, cities aren't able to implement things that would be more strict than state law. So, again, it is a tall task, but if there's any ideas, um.
Is there something that's passed in Austin or?
Yeah, this recent.
And then I, I truly think we go back, it starts at overlay, then regular dark building.
That's not the bill number, but that's what the.
It's, well, if the property now, you know, if our buildings, if we do have a centralized building, there's, well, that are, you know, maybe they're less likely to move into certain spaces.
Yeah.
You know, the game room, one of the things I would like to bring up is that ordinance again, because I've read other ordinancees that have been successful, where, you know, our game rooms have all the front windows blacked out. And, uh, cities now have one of the things they're implementing is that all windows have to be open. Not open air, opening.
And I believe actually Odessa, Dan, and from TV, but, you know, they have resources, we believe that we got to plug in.
Oh, that's good news.
We'll see how that works out.
Right, I know Amit was close to following that Odessa. Um, yeah.
So, so what are these games?
They're, yeah, they, well, they gamble and they, you win a, um, a, um, token, but not money, although they're, they're, every once in a while. That's how they're legally operate. Every once in a while, they get busted because they are, you know, giving out money.
So what are they hiding? They cover all the windows.
Right, 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 yeah.
For what to see.
But one of the ways they get around the law about not paying, paying in money is they give a token, and then you go two doors down and they'll redeem the token, so.
Yeah, I mean, one of the first things you see, you drive into Alpine, this is, you know, how to reassure businesses that are detrimental. Driving to Alpine from Fort Stockton, first thing you see, game room, signs falling down, then you drive up to Highland, glowing sign.
Debris.
Debris, and, you know, and you drive down the road, and there's the, um, you know, you do spend the, oh, then the, then the nito, the nito that is a game room. Um, even our darling little Murphy Street game room, you know, blinking lights, um, you know, and a little of a bunch of other signs and boarded up buildings.
Done.
Taking them away. Right, so.
So, uh, I do have, um, Commissioner Laxton on four and five. Do we have any other events on the site?
All of those, on it, on the one.
There's a third one that you would like to participate in? Is there something that sounds interesting to you?
I'm good with one.
Okay, all right, so we'll look at whatever one that, thank you. That we need help with. We can sign.
Um, I was thinking number five, we were talking about that, there's a way to, you know, describe whatever. Control growth of business is deemed detrimental, um, to protect.
And I think that we probably did, with small economies, I mean, that was, I mean, to protect them and one of our other businesses, maybe they were. Right.
I think that's what council was thankful of.
When they came up with that, they're the one that. So our stores can't argue, they're not detrimental to, um, you know, not from their perspective, yeah, their corporate. So basically, we want to protect and save the community, if you want to keep it, the community, the local deal.
And an example, I, I talked with the manager at Porter's. Porter's has stopped carrying laundry detergent, dish soap and stuff like that because Dollar General sells it for less than they, it costs them to buy. So.
I, listen, I've been on the other side of it, I can say right now, because I spent nine years relocating with Walmart's. They run the little guys out of business, no doubt that one. But that's why I'm like, I'm happy to jump in.
You used to work for Walmart? I actually support Walmart, because they, they support the economically disentendance in London.
It has, it's, it's got its advantages and its disadvantages, but just like, right now, three Dollar Generals in this town, that's, you just point and chase. Porter's can't even carry that, and what I think that doesn't help, there's more.
There's more.
Family Dollar, yeah. I know baby dollar. But again, you know, it's not that you don't want to help the community, but at some point, you just gotta say enough is enough. You know, because you can't run the people out of town with a bigger, whatever, take care of them.
Look, I agree, and that, and morally, ethically, I completely agree, but at the same time, one of our jobs is also to create jobs for the community. And sometimes a big company will come in and actually create more jobs than they display.
Yeah, and then you take the little guys out of business, we lost jobs, and an income pocket. And then the work, yeah. So, you know, you gotta look at it, you gotta worry, yeah.
The biggest deal what you have is the detail, yeah.
Exactly, just, yeah, be careful, you're gonna watch it.
How appropriate, that's the thing, I think, uh. It is horrible, though.
Yeah. That's gonna be the key to.
Yeah, anything that y'all can get done, um, out of these tasks, would be good. Council does pass these annually, so they'll be revisiting and re-tapping, uh, the beginning of next this year. Um, y'all did already complete, of course, the zoning map that that helped with, at least, you know, he said, that. Responsibility to continue and use that data to get it updated, but, um, you know, anything else that y'all can get done as well on the, on the task. Historic district, I'd say that y'all made a lot of progress.
Shall we move on to action items? Oh, no, no, wait, wait, are we gonna discuss? The, um, the public hearing, should we, are we able to?
Uh, no, there's gonna be, uh, action items from Regina.
That's what we can discuss. Okay, all right, so let's move to discuss, um, the approve and replat. Do we need a motion to?
It is, I have one question, please. It says to allow the development, development of what?
That's.
We need to play a motion. And a second in order to move to discussion.
Yeah, it's in the commissioner's packet, development of what? Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm gunning dismissed.
That's right.
The question was not just give it to, but that's one we put.
Yeah, what was?
Oh, it tells you when the, where is your packet? But you're probably, you know, and, and we need a motion, guys. Okay, so we need a motion to, um.
It always may get approved and then, uh, vote against.
All right, so let's make a motion to approve the replat, that's where we are, right? I feel like I'm in class, it's like daydreaming in class, but I wasn't, really wasn't, I just got lost for a second. Um, a replat to allow applicant John Wagner here of AMXS Land Development LLC to design underlying lots to one, to allow development. The project in question is located in Holland and Fifteenth Street, and legally described in the east part of Lot One, do I need to read the whole name?
Yeah.
Lot One, Two, and Three. And Block, and Block Six. Thomas turning big in addition to the town of Alpine, Rooster County, Texas. The parcel I can get the subject property is R one, two, eight, seven, six. The record property owner is Glenn Short. The current zoning classification of the subject property is C two business district. If the replat is approved, the zoning classification will remain C two business district. Do we have a motion? To this.
To approve.
Approved.
And then.
I said, what?
Well, I mean.
That's not telling us what's on.
So essentially, okay.
Somebody.
A motion, an affirmative motion needs to be on the table. I could throw ordinance, you didn't make an affirmative motion, so you can't make it to deny it had to be approved. Then somebody will second the motion, and then you can open up for discussion, and if everybody wants to disagree with you, we'll vote against. Okay.
Okay, so you need somebody to make a motion. Do we, do we have a second? Yeah. And we open this up for discussion, yes. Okay, who wants to start? I was still thinking, but what she said was, if I found the, the, I'll start. So this is, this is my question, so the owner of the property is not the one that is requesting replat? Which means he's, right?
No, 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 yeah, I think you are correct, actually, but in this case, I am gonna defer most of what.
Okay, so because the owner isn't requesting a replat, do we, do we have to have an affidavit from the owner, and somebody that's not an owner requests a, or replat, somebody else's property?
I don't think there's anything by law stopping it, and most times it's contingent, like usually, uh, there's a sale. On approval.
Okay.
Uh, Glenn Short is also the owner of the new time, if they go.
Uh, and we don't have any representatives here today. Um, what is the replat? Um, I did it Mars and subdivision, what, what is, what is their plan? We talked about that?
Yes.
The original plan that we have is a common class in Denver. They would like, as of this time, to put a battery energy storage station. Could it be a model, battery storage? More industrial, it does, and heat demand.
But it's not a store.
No.
This is a green energy thing.
Yes, it's an energy storage.
So, I have my own questions, so it's, um, it's, it's not done industrial.
That's what, I'm not, I know this is right.
Right, yeah, no, it's not done industrial, and that's industrial application, I'm very familiar with it. To have a, like, a more green energy business. Um, so, do y'all understand?
Right, yeah.
What that is? Everybody understands? So these things, um, I mean, what I'm guessing is that I think, yeah, I think it's important, is there any other description? Do they have like a business description there other than a, the M? So it's a, I can use a more, I'm just on that.
May I?
Yes.
So, it's gonna be a building that's gonna be completely filled, typically because of the exhaust, lead acid, like, just like the battery in your car. Okay, and I don't know what voltage these batteries will be set up at, but the technology is two volts per plate. So your twelve volt battery has six plates, and they can do forty eight volt batteries. But they're gonna take power off of the grid, and they're gonna charge all of these batteries. Because right now, we've got big solar cell farms, um, on the way in Fort Stockton, and I think they're fixing to put in another couple hundred acres more. um, on the way in Port Stockton, and I think they're fixing to put in another couple hundred acres more, but backup net, our power grid today is what's called an on-demand grid. So every kilowatt we put onto the power grid has to be consumed, because if we don't, we will eventually overpower the grid and cause a failure. All of this green energy is controlled by nature, not by man. Our normal power plants, gas, natural gas, coal, they have a knob, and they can turn, they can go from a hundred kilowatts to five hundred kilowatts, just by turning the knob. We can't control the sun, we can't control the wind. When the wind's blowing, the sun's shining, they want to store energy, and that's where the battery plant comes in, and it'll be huge. Think of a warehouse, we're talking about three city blocks, right? So we're probably talking about maybe a hundred by two or three hundred foot long building. It's just, it'll have aisles, but it'll be solid batteries, probably as high up as they build the ceiling.
And if the railroad tracks are long?
Well, it'll be close, but the railroad tracks require fifty foot ease.
Right.
I think this might actually be just kind of different, you, everything you said is correct, but I think, imagine if you will, like, your comment is possible, that road is of your portable. There's one that's in business right now, 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 by the city, and here to take the, the, and it's the.
Are they planning to stack the iron boxes as well?
Yes, yes, they're up there clearly, but I don't know how many modules.
Okay, so these will be dropping, mind-blowing.
Correct, enjoy, you're in the, you know, I'm not sure.
Would that, would that, yeah.
Come, oh, yeah.
If, um, so they're red chromed in fire.
That's what I'm saying.
Fire, and it, it's considered a chemical fire, so you can't, our, first of all.
If it's lithium, it's made of epoxy gases.
Yeah, and why is it in the city limits? Because we're a, um, a disadvantaged, do they get more tax credits if they build it in the city?
We're no longer a disinterdisadvantaged.
Yeah, we're not.
Our average, you know, income.
This is part of the five and green energy thing, there's also the big hydrogen plant that's going to go into Fort Stockton, and several other things, hydrogen-powered vehicles.
Why do they choose Alpine?
Because, probably, our member of the House representative is, is part of the economic plan, because, I want to say they set aside eight or nine hundred billion dollars. And that's all free money, I guess y'all know that, it's free money, because it's taxpayer money, and they're gonna spend it, no matter what. So everybody's rushing around trying to get part of that money, but the people that represent us, our, our House of Representatives, our senators, are trying to spread the wealth around. So I think Fort Stockton got a hydrogen plant, so we're gonna get a battery back.
Well, why it's, why, why, or that, or by the old man?
They have to have access to the power poles, or they have to be able to hook up to the power, and I drove by it, and I think that, that there's like some power there.
There's a substation, probably.
Yeah.
But why don't they put it out on the, on the south, south bills?
It's not so. Period.
And so, uh, we were discussing this earlier, basically, this replat is approved, your recommendation would be to move forward with your restriction. Uh, rezoning? So, it looks like they would have to go, and so for our ordinance, it wouldn't fit in.
Yeah, it depends on what's in here, it wouldn't fit in C two, it'd have to be, I mean, you'd approve it with the restriction of rezoning.
But it needed to be replatted anyway.
Right, so this, do we have any, are they able to come into Alpine City, Alpine, a full apartment? For something like this, do we have an electrical industrial ordinance? Anything, I mean, shouldn't we have one? And shouldn't we be, I mean, before something like this, shouldn't the city of Alpine consult with an environmental attorney?
I mean, we.
I mean, this is, I mean, these, these are fires, there's a huge fire, one of these, in Arizona, this is not something, I mean, that's right across from the Lutheran church, there's two residences. And on top of that, is being, you know, anxiety.
My concern is that push through the road.
Right, yeah.
Well, it's just one.
Oh, yeah, but, yeah, we have a question.
And it's not a question, this is a personal, not in my occupation statement, it is located directly behind my house, which is a trailer. So it's my trailer, railroad, where they want to put it. I own both properties, the one that, when you drive in, it says Alpine Texas on that, um, the door to the wall, that is also my property.
It's a great little view, Frank.
It's a great little house, though. Um, but it would be located right behind, so I, I mean.
So as a resident owner, you would be concerned having that, yes, yes. I.
So at this point, though, I'm not sure really that anything, much can be done regarding the replat itself. Uh, it would be different, um, as far as the rezon. Um, you know, obviously, we'll need to be rezoned, for building services, in order for them to operate as they want to do, or establish that. So I, I think the situation might be different at that point, but the replat, I don't think there's one that would do that as far as right now.
Well, you mean, like, we can still vote against it?
A state law, well, right, the state law does, um, say that a replat, then, it basically doesn't need to be, you're quite fine with that. It's a formality, really. But the law requires a, right, here, this is the same issue with the dollars, the dollar, but we could run against it.
Right, well, yeah, we'll go, I guess, and we could, but.
Still have to give you zone. And if the rezon, I think, is where we would have more, um. Right, right.
Our, our.
Legal opportunities. So the replat will go before council, and council will have to approve it.
I mean, if they want to be in, uh, you know, if they want to follow.
Yeah.
If you're finding the only, that you could, should be, be, be not, in favor of it.
Right.
But it's still could be as, pretty, pretty vulnerable right now.
Can we, for our next meeting, evaluate an electrical industrial ordinance?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, did you, has the, has the city adopted the electrical code? Does that have anything to do with what we're talking about, or?
I mean, it would be the same thing they did, they did come out, I think, recently, twenty twenty one, N F D A, eight fifty five. And they actually have specific codes that you have to meet requirements for these energy systems, but going back to the same, if they are law code ordinance, all the zoning requirements. Those, because the city, we think, legally, stop, prevent.
Is there anything further, you know, along the lines of what Commissioner Raps wants to do, that they can implement?
With that, that's.
More standards, as far as, like, what this place is.
I have to look in the net and see what I do.
I'm kidding. I'm pretty certain, I'm pretty certain they have, and I'm wondering if that's why they selected Alpine. Is because we don't.
Well, these are still gonna need fire suppression systems, and it's new, it's new construction, so water will not put these fires out. It's gonna be a bone-based chemical, and they will have to have it, if they can get around that. Now, will it be successful? As we know, with some of the lithium-based cars that are turned over and caught fire, fire departments are not equipped to put out those types of fires, the typical response is to get everybody out of the way, and just let it burn out. We're talking about a huge fire.
It must be a fire, they're, I think.
That's what I'm concerned with. There's a road where there's only two railroads that's through the. You have to.
If it's lithium, there's not water, you know, the batteries themselves aren't gonna discharge water or anything, but you know, even the lead acid can catch fire.
Even next to the railroad track, you have the bright chemical on the tracks, going down through there, if something happens.
Okay, oh, oh, that's going on, and of course, you can fight it with sand, too, we got lots of, but it's a master.
Um, I, I don't know about lithium, but I know a magnesium fire, if you hit it with water, the magnesium burns so hot that it actually separates the water into hydrogen and oxygen, which are both highly flammable.
So, how, do they, have they, the A E P know, I mean, have, do they have permission from A E P to, um, to connect their batteries?
As far as what their use is, I haven't done that part of the process.
It was my understanding they'd actually be selling.
Right, yeah, that they would have to get approval first.
They will go through the permit, the permit board.
Right, um.
The firefighting department, that does local training.
Right.
And that'd be my biggest concern here, is with water location.
You can't buy the water, yeah.
And I'm not sure where, close, take our boats, waters, waters, I don't understand, I don't know, I get wrong.
Do we know that the, that, like, how big? Man, I know, if I went for the law, or, I mean, do we know how, like, what's her vintage, like, eighteen thousand, maybe? That's right, you down, shy, like, wow, that's huge.
That's roughly a half a city block.
Yes. That's not.
That, that would be the, right?
But that's probably square footage, yes.
So it's, you know, you'd be like, in gas storage things, that when you're driving, like, on the outskirts of Houston, and, I mean, this is, as anxiety. A little narrow.
There's no way you can make this work.
Yeah, and that, yeah.
You'd buy that area.
I'm just saying, yeah, flexes to why they should, I think you nailed it. Those, because we don't have all this.
Well, they started putting out container homes in March, if you want to go see what it looks like.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but the container home, that's a whole other.
You just keep, and there's a container.
Probably, we have, we have, don't hear, don't, don't hear you.
I'm surprised.
This probably will not be the only energy storage.
I'm sure it'd be great find, that there are other, that if you point, once we have this, there'll be another, but we're sorry.
Well, there was a proposal for hydrogen storage in Alpine as well.
Um, can't they at least be located somewhere where it's, uh, in Jersey? Would it take something, I think, where they could land, right?
That's just from what there is only, you can't just be something else on the outside of the town, it turns to general pressure.
So if, um, the replat is approved, or what have you, and we consider a, a rezoning request, would it be spot filming, change it to N one? And so we, we have more latitude as far as to be able to disapprove of the rezon. We can deny that. So if that's the case, and, I guess we're gonna need to look into that, but if the commission wants to, like, deny these, what we require, um, you know, how that would proceed, I think it may still would have been, regardless of, again, I think we have more will. Makes a change.
And if they, if they, they can move outside the city limits, and then they're out of our purview anyway.
Exactly, right, and that's, but probably the best thing we could do is get them out of the city.
Right, and they have difficulty looking out for the. No, they figured out.
There's a great big substation at the cell cell, uh, solar cell farm, a great big substation, so.
Right there.
There's time. And so, had a representative visited you in person?
Thank you, good luck, thanks for running the press. Proposes one here, I think, that's being built right now, in just, Andrew's.
So, I just remembered, I took this together, I think there's some kind of lithium going near Vandmore, I don't know what it is, but I read a, uh, it's either a, um, it's either research, or there's something close, that may be why they're looking at Alpine. I'll have to learn, I'll send it to you, and it may be like a pre-planning, probably, I've been in pre-planning, maybe it is. Um, okay.
Yeah, we couldn't, I think as far as that replat doesn't matter whether we approve it or not, uh, we can disapprove of it, but it's still gonna happen, with our power doing. But we don't.
Okay, so what do we do now? We, uh, we.
You can go ahead and take a vote, I think you're ready for it.
We have a motion to.
You don't need to, you just, you can go straight to the vote, and the motion was to approve.
Alright, so do we have a vote to, to, for the replat?
So those in favor?
Those in favor?
Well, you, you, oh.
No, no.
Okay, and then those opposed?
No, may.
But unanimously opposed.
Right. Um, our second, do we have a motion to approve a special use permit, two oh two three dash oh seven oh line? A special use permit to allow to applicant Alpine Independent School District to establish a daycare center. The property in question is located at seven oh four West Alans Avenue, and legally described as lot, lot six through ten, block one, the listed information was the city ballot. The parcel ID in the subject property is R one oh four five zero. The record property owner is Alpine I S D and Trust. The current zoning classification of the subject property is R two, two family district. If the replat is approved, the zoning classification will remain R two, two family district.
So this is not.
Wait, we need a motion. Do we have a motion?
Ava.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Now, let's discuss.
Where is?
This is, this is the old high school, who moves the, building.
Old high school, R two.
Yeah, that's one way, is that, and then it says it's gonna remain R two, it is owned that way, is that, is it R two family?
It'd be part of the bigger picture of what we're trying to fix, on the map, going forward after we make these amendments.
This is critical, we need this map fixed, keep things like, we have the old school. Hi, that's why I need to get it.
Sorry, so is it the old high school, or is it?
It's the admin building.
It's now the admin.
It's the building right across the street, yeah.
So I was just advised, can you repeat it?
So a school can be located inside a residential zone, a daycare has to have a special use permit. They're asking to be especially concerned for a daycare, not for the school. So our school, Alpine I S D, is in a residential R one.
Okay.
Um, and you can have, based on our ordinance, you can have a school inside a residential zone.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. Why do you have to have a special, I mean, for a daycare?
Our ordinance stated that way.
That there's no, right?
Probably because of the traffic.
They're not talking in a special, a different building, they're talking inside the building, huh? It means, technically, correct me if I'm wrong, a special use permit would be required for any business operating.
Inside a residential. So technically, um, if there, if there's just a normal house that wanted to be a daycare, then you'd need a special use permit for that, this so happens to be the school operating as a daycare. So just consider the idea of the zone that it's in, and the usage, and it's in a zone, and just remove the school part of it.
Yeah, and, and this would be operated by the school.
Yeah.
We need daycare.
And we do, and I was gonna say, I'm on the A B A, and working with Kirsten on economic development, we not only need daycare, but we also need a nursing home, and I would implore you to let us move forward with this, because the city desperately needs this kind of stuff. And
how much parking would be?
We're not having it over here. There's still plenty of parking, and they're not making any changes, um, to the exterior.
And they also own the lot across the street.
There would be an increase in traffic in the morning and in the evening, when parents are dropping off.
Do you support the school zone, if there's still a school zone in that area, like I'm, you're probably, something that needs to be, it's still at twenty.
The day we figure it out.
Yeah.
Should they, should they implement?
Twenty and, twenty and, before you get to that, I think it's already thirty, yeah, glad they're right there.
And Alpine I S D, I mean, and if there's gonna be students there, regardless of their age, shouldn't we, uh, actually, because, um, yeah.
It wouldn't be considered a school because it's a daycare. It's not, there's enough, it's a daycare, we're, it's not.
Yeah, you don't normally have schools on the daycare.
Solution to that is, the solution to that is volunteers, most, most like things like this, have striped crosswalks, and then they have vests and signs, and parents rotate through and control. and then they have vests and signs and parents rotate through and control traffic.
Right.
It's another good reason that, that we make the, the, the building itself, it's on the storage zone, so the exterior change much.
Right.
I know what you did here.
Do we have a vote? All in favor? Do we wanna continue the discussion? Fine.
So unanimously approved?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, item C, we need to appoint a chair.
But what?
I'm the co-chair. I'm the co-chair and, um.
You're the chair.
Well, okay, but this, this is the point, this is my reservation that being a chair is that, you know, there's time that I, I, you know, we all have things to do. And I am a business owner and I sit on other boards and I spend a lot of time already on planning and zoning. I mean, I can, my leisurely free time is ordinances and storage. But, and, but it was the additional time to then prepare something for council that was hanging me up. It was that one more thing I had to do, I was gonna crack. And I don't know how much is involved with that. I, I tried to, I didn't see on it present. I have set through a lot of those, but I guess, we're doing. Yeah.
I didn't hear that one.
We're here to help. I mean, I'm happy to do it for a while. And if I start to crack, I may need somebody else to, um, crack it by under pressure.
Does the chair ever come to city council? Not while I've been there.
Uh, do we need to do a motion first?
Yes.
To have, some new motion to discuss this? Can I make a motion to, now, do we have a motion to discuss?
Okay.
And a second. Okay. So it's been on the agenda for the chairs or someone to take their place to report to city council. We have yet to have someone from the beginning, we actually show up to a council meeting. Um, typically, unless you physically wanna be here, it's just whatever you guys decide as a group, the recommendation is what gets presented to council. If it's something you're very passionate about, I would, you know, help or hope one of you all would be there, but it doesn't always have to be the chair. I do listen to most every council meeting, um, soon.
And you can attend that too.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, if I may need, I mean, I'm happy to, to, I, I'm a lousy.
You're not lousy, learning, yeah.
But.
Is everybody know Megan? She's our city manager, okay.
Um, if somebody would like this session, you're more than welcome to have it. I, I can do it temporarily until somebody learns that like they would like to step in. I mean, I, like I said, I, I'll continue to spend a lot of time on planners, I mean, but I may need some help in presenting to council. If it happens, if they want me there on a day that's not, um, that it's been.
And it would be great to have a representative from B and Z come and present the council periodically.
I have a lot more time.
Okay. Now, when is your turn? Okay. I need a motion to give me our next.
Chair.
The chair.
Somebody second.
And you agree?
Just to, to be clear, that was to, uh, appoint Abby as the chair.
That's right. For a little while, okay, for a little while, we'll see how it stays.
Vocalize your acceptance.
Okay, uh, yeah.
All in favor?
So we need a co-chair, Matt? Do we need a co-chair? We have, I think the next, um, session item, our action item is appoint other officers of the planning and zoning commission. So do we have a motion? Do you want that? And they're open, co-chair?
So because she would be moving her vice chair, the chair, the vice chair would be open, uh, Wendy's currently the secretary. So y'all can make any amendments.
Right, it's not, if you would like to be the, you wanna do the vice chair, you went away?
I think you need a motion first.
Oh, sorry, we need a motion.
I make a motion to, I'm the vice chair.
I say them.
Yeah.
Oh, I make a motion to express, why even like, I say them.
Yeah. Is there anyone that would like that? This show?
Yeah.
Wendy, you wanted to repeat the like in the separate voice. No, Wendy's already the.
So what, what position are required?
Um, I mean, it's best to have the leadership positions still, so those are typically the three that would be.
Chair, co-chair, secretary.
Okay. I guess the co-chair will lead the meeting.
Then you're.
Okay.
As long as you're, somebody's always here. Obviously, right, and then I will go on, and then in July, I will not leave. Just in, okay, very important tournament.
As long as we have a forum physically present.
Okay. Okay, thank you, that important thing, and I will, yeah, so. Yeah, but when, on day, if I am on Zoom, would the co-chair lead or?
Yeah, technically, uh, the, somebody physically present.
Okay. When is that? Abby, August?
I don't know why.
Do we have a motion to amend the original motion to appoint, um, Commissioner Walter as the vice chair?
Hi.
Yeah.
I say that.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that amendment. unanimously approved. And then we can go back and we're technically supposed to approve the original motion as amended. So we all will just take a vote on it as well. So are all in favor of approving that original motion as amended?
Hi.
Thank you. Pleasure.
A little in the weeds the best.
That's why he said chief governance officer, right, that's his title.
We're both, Robert.
Yeah. He hasn't memorized, he doesn't book. She knows good.
Do we have any board member comment? We start that?
Well, we welcome and thank you to make the decision and we all will talk about it. So in the process that we all have learned, because the majority weren't new.
Yeah, well.
And I'm still, even though I, I'm still feel like I'm new, but.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, that's for it.
I've known you a little bit.
I know, I'm so, I know what I'm giving, I'm giving you.
Thank you for volunteering and welcome to our new.
Yeah, welcome to our new.
Yeah.
Thank you for the job you do.
Yes.
And so one more thing, um, I just remembered, I actually built, uh, nine nine point nine 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 reliable facility as a satellite earth station. We had a room about the size of this room full of batteries. And we used a gas, I can't remember the name of the gas, but when the lights start flashing, you have three minutes to get on a respirator. The arthoc, arthocases, the gas, when the gas releases, the room is devoid of any air. And that's how they smother out those kinds of fires.
Sorry, I'm so worried.
Yeah, so those are self-contained, right? So there won't be personnel inside those containers, okay?
I better not be.
And it's not, and I, I mean, just end, I mean, this is just comment. That wouldn't create jobs for Alpine.
It would create a couple.
And it would, yeah. Do you think? But the, the couple that it creates, are they worthy doing? Considering what, yeah, this.
No, they would, uh, well, I guess you're right, they could set it up by remote, but typically, they're gonna have a couple of technicians that are going to watch and monitor. And it's like a natural gas plant where they're separating all the gases, but five people run the whole planet. And what all they do is go around and read the gauges, dials, things, and keep records of everything. And if anything starts to get out of tolerance, then they set off the alarms, they push the mushroom buttons.
And even what they do, they have their other, other places too. And as long as that technician is within a hundred miles or something like that.
Actually, within, with an internet connection. A lot of these things now are automated to the point that you can control it by internet. Now that opens you up to hackers and other things, but, you know, I don't think it's gonna have pools on first.
Yeah, that'd be, probably a double ban to it.
Yeah.
I think a priority is that we should be focused on the safety of the inner.
And the beauty.
And I suggested you have a double ban, put landmines between the two.
Just like.
And the residence.
Israel, Israel's my example, my role model.
I guess one is.
And we, all of the north, it's routine, you know, we stop it.
Right.
That's what we all do, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we certainly could have stopped the dollars for.
But we have, we have a chance with the.
Be sure and look up the head start.
Yeah. I will.
It's House Bill twenty one twenty seven, it's a regulatory act, one of the categories it does, uh, govern is. I'm a patient.
Land use, right?
Land use, finance, commerce, agriculture. So anything that the state's regulating right now on those categories, we can't go against. We can't make them, we can't make them, make them basically against.
Which we used to be able to implement, uh, stricter requirements.
So the state says you can have twenty game rooms and we say you can only have four, we can no longer have that in our ordinance, you have to go.
It also regulates E T Zs, right?
No.
What E T Zs were not included?
Those are in a bunch of other buildup acts.
Yeah, it wasn't for one where we would lose.
Every time we annex, we lose the E T J. So if we annex a property, we don't continue the E T J, it's on.
Extraterrestrial rear station, it's outside the city limits, but.
Territory.
I mean, it blocks the city limits.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion is, no.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Do we have a second? We are adjourned. Yeah.
Yeah. You did very well.